I'd like to call the meeting of the North Little Rock Planning Commission to order, please. Would you please call the roll?
Alexander.
Here.
Blasko.
Here.
Chambers.
Present.
Dietz. Foster.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
White. Chairman Clifton.
Here. Here, motion to excuse.
Please excuse the absent members.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that those members not present be excused. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. If you have your cellphones on, please turn them off at this time. And if you have a copy of our agenda, our procedures are on the back of that. And let me please remind the commissioners to speak into the microphone. And you have been provided with a copy of the actions that were undertaken by the Planning Commission that was forwarded on to the City Council. That is in your packet. And you have been submitted a copy of the minutes from our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded, they be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move right into our Development Review Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, mister.
Just one little announcement here. Letting everybody know that this is going to be on live Facebook. So they're broadcasting live on Facebook right now. So be sure to talk into your microphones, have them down by your face so they can hear you and everything. But that'll be the new process on getting this out to the public.
Okay.
It'll be on live. So we're live right now on Facebook.
Okay, so we're not live on this camera here?
Yeah, these cameras are still working with us, but they'll be broadcast over Facebook.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. Development Review Committee, Mr. Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Development Review Committee met and considered item SD 2017-9 Schilkot's Commercial Annex, Lot 2, Site Plan Review of a Commercial Lot Located West 37th Place. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 10 and subsections. And with that, Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
We considered item SD 2017-10 Calvary Edition, Lot 3, Preliminary Platte and Site Plan Review of a Parking Lot for First Pentecostal Church Located at 1401 Calvary Road. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 12 and subsections. And with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? On the application, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Please let the record reflect that I did not participate in any discussion or voting on this application.
The committee considered SD 2017-11 Downey Subdivision, Lot A, Replat and Site Plan Review of a Burger King Located at 403 East Broadway Street. The applicant was present and we considered items 1 through 12 and subsections. And Development Review Committee recommends approval with amendment to item 4. And this is in light of the city's new posture on parking in the public right-of-way in the downtown core. The city's new posture is to allow parking that backs into the street as long as it's 45-degree parking and complies with the city engineer's standard for that type of parking. So the new item, the new wording for item 4A is, instead of remove, it says, "Allow the five backout parking spaces along Fourth Street and comply with the requirements of the city engineer." The city is encouraging denser parking in the light of continuing development downtown that is removing the large parking areas. It is also, the city is stipulating that if parking is in the public right-of-way and backs into the public right-of-way, it may not be leased, rented, or otherwise encumbered financially if anyone wants to park there. It is truly public parking. With that, Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, be approved as amended. Is the applicant aware of the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are. And we are supportive of the amendment.
You're agreeable with that?
Yes.
On the application as amended, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
The final item on our agenda was item number SD 2017-12 Mount Air Edition, Lot 1R, Replat and Site Plan Review of Thrive Argenta Located at the corner of East Fourth Street and Poplar. Prior to the Development Review Committee's recommendation, I would like to offer the Thrive representatives to make a presentation to the commission.
Please come up and give us your name, please.
Hi, I'm Mary McGenther. I'm the representative for Thrive. And I'll just go over a little bit with you what Thrive is and what we're planning on. And if you have any questions on that.
You can put the microphone around, too.
I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay.
And, you know, I've also got a couple of notebooks. I don't have one for everyone, but you can pass them around if you'd like. They give you an idea of what we're doing.
And start over here, please.
Sure, what would you like?
Yes, I will.
So these are conceptual renderings, but it'll give you an idea of what the community is going to look like.
Are the buildings red brick?
Yes, sir. We're still going back and forth on some of the coloring of the bricks. So the brick is going to be basic red brick, but with different variations in shade.
It will be in the red range.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, continue with your presentation.
Okay, so Thrive is kind of a work, live, play community. And what we like to do is we come in and we like to contribute to neighborhoods and create a really dense urban walkable neighborhood. So all of our locations, we have a location in Bentonville, Arkansas, and a location in Jinks, Oklahoma. And all of our Thrive communities are developed to contribute to the neighborhoods and the communities that they're placed in. So we like to provide the residents of a city a place to live, a place to work, and a place to play. If you look at some of these facades, we really focus on traditional architecture. We like to fit into the area we are in. We don't drop development in and say, you know, we're going to use modern architecture or what you might see in a suburban apartment complex. We like to fit our buildings to the community that we move into. And then, once we move into a community, we engage with that community. So we have a team that comes in, our Thrive team, once we start building. And they'll coordinate with your local businesses, and they'll coordinate with local organizations, and they'll partner with those organizations so that they can weave Thrive into the fabric of your existing neighborhood. So our goal is to not just build an apartment complex, it's to build a community that can further contribute to the community that's already in place. And part of what our Thrive team really will do, once they hit the streets here, is just listen and see what we can contribute. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about what Thrive is or what we're planning on doing architecturally.
You're, Mr. Chambers. You either are zoned or will be zoned C6, so that does allow mixed commercial and residential?
Yes, sir. And we focus, we do have a focus on mixed use. And we tend to focus on small local businesses that can provide services to the community.
So the first floor may not necessarily be on Fourth Street, for example. It may not necessarily be apartments, it may be commercial.
It may be. So the way that we build our buildings is that first floor is convertible. So if it ends up being apartments, if we don't find a tenant right away, then it can be an apartment. But if we have someone come in that's an amazing local business that really needs a spot, we can easily convert it.
Well, you're also right across the street from the hub, which may be very advantageous.
Exactly.
I also noticed that one of the corners was labeled Crown Pub. Is that something you normally put in, or is that just eye candy for the drawings?
Yeah, those are just conceptual drawings with some artistic license built in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I had to laugh at my chairman for a minute.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Foster.
I notice in your handouts, the illustrations indicate several different ranges of brick. It looks like it adds a little variety to the design. Is that what it's going to be, or is it going to be the same shade of brick all through?
No, there's going to be different shades of brick. So we had played with some of the white brick, and I think we're moving away from that. I think we're going to stick to the shades of red. But you will see some variation in color throughout the buildings. We like to break it up a little bit visually.
I would even say chocolate would be in the range of red.
I'm sorry?
Chocolate.
I kind of like the white.
With a little bit of red.
Yeah.
I thought this one in light-colored brick looks kind of interesting, too.
Yeah, the white, I mean, the beige brick is really pretty.
Yeah, I bet it would be.
Have you did your calculations on your parking on-street and interior parking, I see? But what is your calculated parking spaces that you'll be able to contain inside the project?
Believe inside is in the 80s, 89, maybe? Yeah, 86 or 89, on the interior. And also, I believe, and I think the site plan is in your packet, the interior parking that you see, you also see there's like, when you look at the buildings, it looks like there's a small apartment. There's tuck-under garages in four of the buildings, so that also adds to the parking count. And I believe there's 32 or 30 garages as well onsite.
So how many apartments are you projecting?
There are 162 apartments.
And then you're projecting how many parking spaces for that?
On the onsite?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I believe it's 86.
Does that include the on-street parking?
That does not include the on-street parking.
How much would, because you're all going to be in control of that somewhat.
Somewhat.
In a park district.
Yes.
So how many parking spaces would be provided, counting on-street?
That comes out to about 150, counting the on-street parking.
Well, not quite one per unit, then?
Not quite one per unit, but what we're really trying to focus on here is that this is a really dense urban environment. And when you move into a really dense urban environment, you kind of, especially in existing one like this, you kind of have to abandon that one-for-one. And it's something that we, you know, we try to do in all of our developments, but you make exceptions when you're in a dense urban environment.
Okay, Ms. Chambers.
You're also one-half block from a trolley stop.
I'm sorry?
You're a half a block from a trolley stop.
Yes, that's, yeah. And, I mean, the interconnectivity in this area, just with Little Rock, with North Little Rock, I mean, there's bike trails, there's walking trails, there's a trolley. We would hope that some of our residents would utilize that.
I'd also want to point out that the parking requirement for C6 is zero.
Yes, I know, there is no parking requirement, which a lot of urban areas are moving to anyway, so y'all are kind of ahead of the curve, but...
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. But like I said, a lot of cities are moving away from parking requirements in urban areas because it prevents development.
Okay, any comments from anyone in the audience? Ms. Blasko?
Well, I'm not in the audience, but you asked the question about the parking. What about containing kids? And by containing, I mean razor wire and... I don't see a playground or anything. Was that...
So what we have is we have interior courtyards for our two main buildings. And what we've moved away from in Thrive is a clubhouse or a pool area. We're trying to provide year-round areas for our residents together. So in the middle of each of the main buildings is a courtyard. And it's an open courtyard that you can use for yoga or, you know, we have barbecue grills, so we'll have two grills set up. And then, the building closest to Magnolia, there'll be a barbecue grill setup area with tables and grills and a pergola, and then you'll have an open courtyard. So it'll be a grass, fully enclosed courtyard. And then the one closest to Poplar will have a water feature, a garden, some chairs where you can sign. So we have green space, it's just, it's fully contained by the building. We thought that would be best in an urban area.
Is your target audience or occupants going to be families or just singles, individuals?
It would probably be a young professional or a younger family, not a, it's, they're two, one and two bedrooms. So that kind of inhibits the amount of people that could live in one unit.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any comments? Any other comments from the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll. Or please, all in favor, aye.
Hold on just a second, we haven't gotten staff recommendation.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, the staff heard the applicant, and we recommended approval of items, and the applicant agreed to items 1 through 12, and we're adding an item 13. Item 13 says, "Meet the requirements of North Little Rock Electric."
Yes, sir.
And with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Okay. Open for discussion again. Anyone else on the application? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move into our public hearing portion of the meeting. Our first item is Conditional Use Number 2017-1. Would the applicant please come up? All right, you want to briefly tell us what you're proposing here?
We're proposing to allow metalwork and custom fabrication on this site. The site next door, the customer currently has as his business, he's building this other business to, a larger facility for himself, same type of materials, or same type of what he's doing now over in the other building.
Okay, have you been furnished a copy of the site plan conditions on this?
Yes.
And you do agree with those?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Alexander.
Yes.
Blasko.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes, the application passed. Get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next. Item number two is Rezonation Case Number 2017-4 to rezone property from I-1 to a C6 to allow a restaurant at 403 East Broadway. Is the applicant representative here? Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead and give us your name for the record, please.
I am Thomas Pallinell with Thomas Engineering, representing the Burger King.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. This is currently a Burger King site. We are looking to raise the building and build a completely new building. And the site plan's been previously approved by this commission. And what this rezoning is, is more of a housekeeping matter in which part of the property is currently C6 and the other property is I-1. We request to make the I-1 property the C6, to make it more universal and contiguous. And also, it would be more in favor of the C6 development downtown.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from anyone in the audience on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Alexander.
Yes.
Blasko.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes, the application did pass. Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next case is Special Use Case Number 2017-2 to allow a recreational vehicle until August the 1st, 2017, in an R2 zone located at 16400 Harvey Watson Place. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Please come up and give us your name, please.
Michael Sneed. I've asked that I allow it to be kept here until I get the house built in order to protect the property, to keep, make sure that copper's not ripped out of the thing while building, to be onsite just to protect the place.
Have, has there ever been a home or anything at this site before?
No, sir.
I see from the photos that we have, you have a septic tank already installed?
Yes, sir.
You installed it for this or for your home?
Yes, sir. Well, for the home. It's installed for the home. That's why the trailer's sitting so far away from it. I have the, set where the home is from 100 to 140 feet back. The trailer's actually sitting 145 feet back so that I can hook onto it and pull it straight out when the home is built.
Okay, so it's your intention to remove?
Yes, sir.
This RV or recreational travel trailer and the canopy over it?
Yes, sir.
When your home is built?
Yes, sir.
Is that what your intent is? Okay. Okay, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir. Are you under construction?
Yes, sir.
Have you got the slab port or...
No, no, I haven't started the building at all yet. I'm waiting to deal with this, and then we're going to start immediately.
Okay, and you feel you can be, at least be living in the house and remove this by August 1?
Yes, sir.
I'm inclined to be, in this case, generous rather than restrictive and say, you know, be sure and have it be off the property by August 31. But that would be a call, that would be enforced, not so much by the city as the neighbors. If you're there on September 1, they would call us and say, hey, you know, he's in violation of his agreement.
Yes, sir.
And that's when we'd come and have words. But anyway, the, I would support an amendment if it suits you. I'm allowing for weather and things like this, to allow you to keep the unit there until August 31 so that you have sufficient time to get into your home.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Now, that's, I'm making a motion for an amendment, so that has to be voted on.
Second. Motion made and seconded that this be amended to August the 31st instead of the 1st. Are you agreeable to that?
Yes, sir.
On the amendment, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
One question.
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, you know, we've approved this kind of deal before. It almost looks like to me what we have here is a construction trailer, you know, like a contractor using it, and he's the security guard that man's the stations. I mean, we've approved these all over the city, you know. I don't see any difference in that than what he's asking for here.
Good point, Mr. Foster. Let me ask you, how big is your lot here?
It is 1.34 acres.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Yes, please come up and give us your name for the record.
My name is...
Please come up.
My name is Harvey Stewart.
Yes, sir. Come to the microphone, please.
I'm Harvey Stewart. I'm an 81-year-old retired airplane pilot. And I wasn't quite ready to retire, but there don't seem to be much demand for 80-year-old airplane pilots. So I stayed retired. About 25 years ago, my partner, business partner and best friend, Harvey Watson, and I bought 440 acres of land out in that area, and we put it into two or three subdivisions out there. What I'm going to say next may appear to be a little irrelevant, but I promise you, give me a couple of minutes, and I'll tie it all together. Some eight or 10 years ago, my wife was diagnosed with severe Alzheimer's disease. And she's steadily gone downhill ever since then. She weighs 121 pounds. She cannot feed herself. She cannot bathe herself. She cannot put her clothes on. She is in bad shape. Our daughter, about two or three years ago, approached me about putting a mobile home behind where I live. At the time, I owned 57 acres out there, and it wouldn't have been a problem. But I told her, I said, "It's not in the city limits, but I'm pretty sure that North Little Rock has zoning authority over it. And before you go buy a mobile home," and I said, "It's perfectly all right with me, but before you go buy a mobile home, I suggest that you go to the Planning Commission and get a permit." She did that, and they denied her permit. You know, she's a sick woman, but I made her some promises 62 years ago, that I was going to take care of her. And I was going to do it for better or for worse, sickness and health, until death do us part. And I intend to keep those promises. Now, when we put this subdivision in, we had a, we had some attendant, some restrictions put on to it. And to keep people from putting stuff in there that just wasn't nice and attractive. And about the latter part of, the latter part of November last year, I saw an awful-looking mobile home on this lot. This lot, our engineer said we had to have five-acre lots. But to get it to come out right, he had to have one lot that was on each six and seven that was on the south side of Harvey Watson Drive. The Bill of Assurances says that no, no habit, inhabitable structure be put on that lot. It says that no sewer system be installed on it. And...
I'm sorry, wait a minute, wait a minute. No what?
No septic tank system be installed on the lot. It's in the Bill of Assurance.
Okay.
I was driving down the road, and I saw this lot. It had a, had an electric meter on it, and it had a water meter put on it. And I stopped and talked to a gentleman there that was working on the driveway, and I asked him what he was going to do, and he said, "We're going to put a trailer in here." And I said, "That'll be illegal when you do that." He said, "Well, the boss is not here now, but he'll be back in, and I'll tell him about it in an hour or so." So I gave him my telephone number and warned him that, you know, if he put in a trailer there, that's going to be illegal. And he not only didn't call me, but he put the trailer in and a septic tank system the next day. I wrote a letter, a nice letter to the church there that sold him the property, and asked him to bring it into compliance. Respectfully, I asked him to bring it into compliance. And I asked him to do it in 30 days. That's been four or five months ago, and I hadn't heard anything from him since. But anyhow, my partner and I own the land, and we think it's valuable real estate that's next to this contraption here. And it, believe it or not, it affects the value of our property. I understand that in order to get approval for this special use, Mr., whatever his name is here, had to post a flag out front. And, not a flag, but a sign out front, saying that the property was up for rezoning. The first day or so, the sign's kind of bent over when the wind blew. The second time, the day it skewed around a little. The third time, it skewed around a little more. And the fourth day, it was exactly oblong to the rope. You couldn't read it. Shortly after that, we had a little wind, and the sign blew down. And I've been taking pictures of it for the last three weeks. And the last two or three weeks, it's been laying face down on the ground. I submit to you, gentlemen and ladies, that if we can't trust Mr. Sneed to put up a... I submit to you, gentlemen and ladies, that if we can't trust Mr. Snead to put up a requirement for a flag, a sign, we can't trust him for anything else either. I'll show you some pictures of the, of the sign.
Mr. Stewart, let me ask you a question.
Say again?
Mr. Stewart, let me ask you a question.
All righty.
Were you aware that he wanted to put this there until he got his house built?
I'm sorry, sir, I'm a little bit.
Were you aware that Mr. Steed wanted to use this trailer until he got his house built and it would be removed?
Yes, sir, but the problem is, he can't, according to the Bill of Assurances, he can't build a house there.
Well, of course, Mr., the Bill of Assurance has nothing to do with us. That would be a civil matter between you and he.
I understand that.
So what we're faced with here today is to decide if he be granted a special use to use that for a short period of time until he gets a house built. Now, if your Bill of Assurance precludes him from putting a septic tank down and there's no sewer, and it precludes him from putting a house on it, I don't really know what, what a use would be for the property. But as again, that has nothing to do with us. That's between you and him on a civil matter.
Okay.
But my question for you though was, were you aware that he was going to build a house there?
The, the Bill of Assurances does not allow a house there.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Ms. Chambers?
Yes, this is a question for the city attorney. Ms. Miller, if August 31, August, September 1 rolls around and we've allowed this unit to be there until August 31, and a neighbor calls in and says that that unit is there in violation of the special use permit, that's when it becomes a city issue. What does the city do? What actions do they take at that point to cause the special use to be complied with?
Mr. Chambers, what would occur would be, as you, as you know, the extraterritorial area that we're talking, when we talk about an extraterritorial area, it is outside the North Little Rock city limits and consequently, our, our law enforcement would not be able to take action. We would have to secure assistance from the Plassey County Sheriff's Office to go out and to exercise or execute any legal remedies that we might, might have. The, you know, naturally, the city could speak to Mr. Snead and remind him of his agreement that that, that he would be moving out by September the 1st. But we would certainly then be taken, gone, we would have to move into a civil litigation situation.
Okay, and he would just remain until a court ordered him to do one thing or another?
Correct.
Okay. I notice, Mr. Spencer, that one of the conditions does not have the normal boilerplate, that their electricity will be cut off. Is that because they are not served by North Rock Electric?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm trying to arrive at remedies that the neighbor can take that are through city legal services as opposed to acting on his Bill of Assurance in court. I'm just trying to arrive at happiness, so.
Mr. Spencer, on conditions to be considered number two, failure to comply may result in loss of the special use. If the special use is good until August the 1st?
August 31 is the limit.
August the 31st, and he does not comply with that, then the special use goes away. And then being as how it's not in the city limits, we don't have jurisdiction over that anymore?
As the city attorney had stated, we would work with the county sheriff's department and the county, county attorney on the process of going forward with it. But it's, it's not, and we wouldn't be able to do it in-house, so it'd be something we would have to work with the county with hand in hand. And we have done that in the past.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Stewart, were you able to hear everything that we've said here?
I'm sorry, sir.
Were you able to hear what we have been discussing?
Were you able to hear what we have just discussed?
No, I didn't even.
Well
I'm a little bit.
We are talking about the possibility of what if Mr. Snead did not remove the trailer if he's granted this request. So it brings us back to, I'd like to ask Mr. Steed a question.
Yes, sir.
Just a minute, please. Yeah, come up so you might be able to hear.
Too many loud airplane in this for too long, you know.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Mr. Steed a question. If in fact, you do not remove your trailer by the 31st, what would be your reason?
My trailer will be gone by the 31st.
What assurance would this body have that that be a fact?
The only assurance I can give you is my word. It will be gone by the 31st. I've been in the building industry, my builder's sitting here with me, and building a house in that amount of time is no problem. As far as the septic system goes, I have a health department approved septic system on the property. And he did know what I was going to do because with the letter that the city gave me to melt everyone, I also melt, put a letter with it explaining exactly what I was doing.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Problem is, it's illegal.
Well, as I say, Mr. Stewart, we don't, we don't have any jurisdiction over that. That would be a civil matter between you and Mr. Steed. Any other comments from any of the commissioners? Please.
Could I say a few more words?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Stewart, the Bill of Assurance that you have?
I understand that's
is, is enforced in civil court.
I understand.
Okay, we can't, we can't do that. But we, but he's getting a special use. He has, he promises to be, have that structure removed and the trailer removed by the 31st of August. And if he doesn't, you call here and the city attorney has told us that they will then work with the county sheriff's department to enforce the special use.
If you can't trust him to put up a sign and keep it up, how you gonna know he's gonna do this?
Yes, sir, and, and we've had many, many applicants that had the same issue with the sign. So, I mean, it's, it's happened before, but people still get notified.
If he wants, if, I did a little research, if he wants to have that trailer in there until he builds him a house, there are at least four or maybe five trailer parks within five miles.
Right, but he wants to be able to guard his property.
Well?
So, anyway, I just wanted to make that clear.
Do you not think it, do you, do you value my property to have this thing in there?
I, I think if you're trying to sell it between now and August 1, knowing, anyone, any appraiser would research it for whether or not it was temporary. And, and I think the temporary nature does not affect your value. That's, that's a non-appraiser's opinion, but it's temporary. Six months tops.
Do you
My daughter tries to do the right thing. And I submit that if he wants a permit to, to do that, he should get it before he moves that trailer in there.
We agree.
Well, you're correct in that, but this is trying to correct that problem now. So if you would go back to the microphone, if you had another comment you'd like to make to us? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Yes, I hope you understand how my daughter feels.
Yes, sir, I absolutely do. Any other comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Alexander?
Yes.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
I'm voting yes because I agree with Charlie. It's, it's not much more than a guard shack, so yes.
Dietz? Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
I abstain. Your application did pass. If you'll get in touch with Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what to do next. Thank you. Mr. Chambers?
Sean, I don't know if you have Mr. Stewart's contact information, but if his daughter made another application for a temporary trailer, I think we would have the same reaction as we had today.
Tell him, Mr. Chambers, what your comment was.
Mr. Stewart, if your daughter applied for the, for the trailer location on your property as a temporary structure to assist you with, you and, with your wife and her mom, I'm pretty sure, I would vote for that if it's as a temporary structure. That's the nature of this request, was a temporary structure. I would not vote for that as a permanent structure.
Not only did he not keep the sign up, he sent out a notice for this meeting here today and left the date off of it.
Well, that's something for Mr. Spencer to research. He will, Mr.
It was a typo on staff's part and we mailed out letters ourselves way in, way before the notice was due.
Mr. Stewart, if this mobile home is still sitting on that lot August the 31st, I would ask you to please come forward to the city attorney's office and make notice of that and action will be taken to try to remedy it.
Of course we'll do that, but I think we will have it settled in court before then.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number four, special use case number 2017-3 to allow a daycare center in an R4 zone located at 1410 East Second Street. The applicant here?
Darryl Boyd, we're proposing to open a childcare center operating Monday through Saturday from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 1410 East Second Street.
Okay, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir. This was a previous daycare center, correct?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay. It's important to point that out so we don't think it's a brand-new place and everything.
Yes.
You have been, have you been, submitted a copy of the conditions at the site plan review?
Yes, sir.
And you do agree with all those?
I do.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. Foster?
Your hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. in the evening.
Yes.
How does that compare with the operation hours of the previous daycare that was operated? About the same?
About the same, yes. I think she, she may have, no, I think she may have closed around 7:30 or so.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. Thank you.
Mr. Chambers? Just, just to clarify for Mr. Foster, many times when they come in and they have specific operating hours, we extend them earlier and later just to be sure they have parameters to operate.
I don't have any problem with this.
Okay.
On the application, please call the roll.
Alexander?
Yes.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item number five, special use case 2017-4 to allow a daycare center in an R5 zone located at 314 East Emily Street. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes, give us your name, please.
Davita Crowther.
Okay. You have been supplied, have you been supplied with a copy of the conditions?
I have.
And you are agreeable to all those?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, ma'am. At our subdivision design review meeting, we discussed limiting the playground area and I didn't know if you'd gotten with staff to do that. So they're gonna, they're gonna fence the yellow line? Okay, okay. Sorry.
I have a question for the fire marshal, please. When they make application for a, a home in a residential area like this, what criteria do y'all determine to whether it's feasible to use a residence for daycare?
That actually falls under DHS.
Chairman Clifton?
For the home daycares.
This is a church, built as a church.
Okay.
Now, if it's in another building like a church or a commercial building, then we, we take a look at it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Alexander?
Yes.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. If you'll see Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what to do. Okay, thank you. Next order of business is public comment. Anyone? Next order of business is a motion?
Summoned.
Motion made and seconded. Would be adjourned. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.